Good morning.
Morning, Mac.
Hey, Mac.
Happy Friday to you.
Yeah, happy Friday.
Mac, I've been doing some brief introductions. If you'll see the esteemed gentleman in the middle of your screen, perhaps Edmund Rutkowski. He's he in that email that I sent to trustees in campus. He's our interim CFO. So really pleased that we can at least have a name with a face today.
Great. Pleasure to meet you, Edmund. Welcome to STCC Finances.
Hello.
Good morning, Bill. How are you today?
Good. How you doing?
Good, thanks.
Nanette, I'm not seeing a quorum. Yeah.
Yes, I'm missing Alessandra. Is that Vicky Kraus on the line? The number that ends in two, six, zero, zero, or Jeff Sattler?
Jeff Sattler on the line.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
So we're missing Janay, Vicky, and Alessandae. And Steve Grande. Eric.
Eric. What about Eric?
Eric. Now Janay is coming in. We now have seven.
Hey, hey, Janay. How are you?
Good morning. I'm well. How are you?
Morning, Janay.
Nanette, I'm just gonna wait one more moment to see if we have other trustees join us.
Yes.
Mary Kate Mearan just joined.
Hey, Vicky.
Good morning.
Good morning, Vicky.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, Nanette, with a quorum, I will call to order the Board of Trustees' annual retreat and regular board meeting of Friday, September 25th, 2020. Would you take the role, please, Nanette?
Yes. Mary Kate Mearan.
Present.
Alessandae Anderson. Vicky Kraus.
Present.
Steve Grande. Eric Hagopian.
I'm here.
Bill Johnson.
Here.
Maurice Lindsay. Janay McDonald.
Present.
Elizabeth Posito.
A present.
Jeff Sattler.
Present.
And Mac Starks.
Present.
Thank you.
Let the role, yeah, sorry, let the role that Maurice trustee Lindsay is on.
Yes, yes.
Great.
And Steve Grande just joined, so.
Great.
Yeah, sorry I'm late.
Yes, thank you, Steve.
No, absolutely, Steve. We know how crazy things are right now. So I'd like to look at the approval of the minutes of our regular board meeting of Monday, August 24th. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved. Back end.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Well, I heard a second.
Great, thanks, Steve. Nanette, would you do a roll call to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held August 24th, 2020?
Yes, Mary Kate Mearan.
Yes.
Alessandae Anderson. Vicky Kraus.
Yeah.
Steve Grande.
Yes.
Eric Hagopian.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Mac Starks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to trustee Starks to go through the Committee on Ways and Means report of September 14th, 2020.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So we had our Ways and Means Committee meeting on September 14th. That included a typical agenda and no unusual concerns coming out of the meeting. We started with our fiscal year 2021 budget detail discussion led by cash flow projection that was not administered by the typical John Tudren. It was done by Dorothy Unger, and she did a good job updating us on where we were from a cash perspective. And so all good there. We then moved to our fiscal year 2021 budget update. Where Mr. Tudren did present an update on our 2021 budget. He showed us a breakdown of how funds from the CARES and G E R were being spent. We also, he also highlighted a number of possible changes in revenues and expenses, and we had a good discussion about that. And we then moved to a revenue and spending report through August 2020. And that report showed a forecasted year-end deficit of about $1.2 million. We then moved to a discussion around our audit and an update of our current audit being performed by the accounting firm O'Connor and Drew. And O'Connor and Drew will present the audit results and financial statements to the audit committee on October 13th. We then had a president's perspective discussion with Dr. Cook. And during that, during that meeting, we were informed that John Tudren is leaving the college. And, you know, I thanked him for his quality service, you know, to the, to the college and to the board with his quality updates, certainly since I've been on this, on this board. You know, it's been a pleasure working with, with John. Thought he brought great insights, good updates, and was able to have well-rounded conversations around our financials, particularly as it related to cash flows, but also he was able to contribute well in our discussions around budgets and forecasts, and particularly in a time like now, we're dealing with COVID, and we don't, we have a vacant CFO position, and John was able to step in and help there. So I recognize, you know, his quality repair, and that then concluded the meeting.
Great, thank you, trustee Starks. Do I hear a motion to accept the Committee on Ways and Means minute meetings held on September 14th, 2020?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Discussion. Nanette, would you please take the roll call to accept the Committee on Ways and Means meeting held September 14th, 2020?
Yes, Mary Kate Mearan.
Yes.
Alessandae Anderson. Yes. Vicky Kraus.
Yes.
Steve Grande.
Yes.
Eric Hagopian.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Mac Starks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Just a little bit off the agenda, I'd like to go right into holding of committee votes. I put forth a motion that trustee Janay McDonald become the chair of the Internal/External Committee for Springfield Technical Community College. Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Steve and Bill. Discussion. Great, thank you. Is discussion. Great, Nanette. Hearing none, will you please take the role to accept trustee Janay McDonald as the chair of the Internal and External Committee for Springfield Technical Community College?
Yes, Mary Kate Mearan.
Yes.
Alessandae Anderson. Yes. Vicky Kraus.
Yeah.
Steve Grande.
Yes.
Eric Hagopian.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito. Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Mac Starks. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we got that business. I understand we still have a open vice chair position. That recommendation will be pushed to the next Board of Trustees' meeting. So I'd like to start, unless there is a motion on the floor for a trustee to accept the vice chair position for the Board of Trustees for Springfield Technical Community College.
Is Mac interested in it?
He's got a, he has a full plate. And so hearing, hearing not an official motion, we'll push this committee agenda item to our next board meeting, which is October 26th. So officially, I would like to welcome everyone to our first meeting of our new school year for Springfield Technical Community College, and appreciate you trustee McDonald taking on another role for the community college and the Board of Trustees. I know your, your passion and your experience will be well-suited for internal and external committee, and I thank you for that. I'd also like to officially welcome trustee Maurice Lindsay. We didn't have an opportunity to do that last time when we spoke. So excited to have you part of the Board of Trustees and to lend your experience and expertise also to the board. And of course, our student trustee, Alessandae Anderson. Really excited again to be working with you, and hopefully very quickly we can get ourselves in a room together instead of doing online meetings. We all know we continue to run into a very, very challenging time, not only for community colleges and colleges in general, but our society with COVID still dominating the headlines in colleges across the country. I will ask that all of our trustees, please get your flu shot coming in October to keep you and your loved ones healthy. But I think it's really important now that we really transition and spend the remaining time to really start talking about some of the agenda items that remain on the agenda for today. So I do want to open it up and start having a discussion of the program discontinuations that were brought forth. As you all know, Dr. Renee Gorman spoke to us in August and spoke to us about the programs, the seven programs that were discontinued. And she had made a recommendation and an ask of this board to reconsider those program discontinuations specifically as they pertain to landscaping, design, cosmetology, and, correct me, there's one more, automotive. Yes, that's right, Eric. Thank you. So I'd like to open it up to have a very open and candid conversation about Dr. Renee Gorman's comments and about the programs in general.
I, Bill Johnson, I guess I'll start. I, I came on late on that meeting, so I only got the last half of it. But as with everybody, we've had to make tough decisions. When there's no money, you have to make tough decisions. Dr. Gorman, you know, stated that the administrators had personal grudges and the decisions were retaliatory on cutting three of the programs at least. And there were seven programs cut. So I guess my question is, does she have personal grudges against the other four programs that she's not advocating for? These people that throw out these type of statements with no substantial, nothing substantial in what they're saying. They're just, they're just trying to divide and conquer. I mean, I, I just found that really, I don't know, saying it was retaliatory with no, no documentation, no proof, no nothing, just make that statement. But we're in tough times. I stand by Dr. Cook's decisions and the administrator's decision on these, removing these seven programs. You cannot spend money you don't have. I had the automotive guy give me a call, I forget his name, and I said, can you give me how many people that have left the automotive class and are still, that went into the trade? I never got that information. I own automotive shop, and things have changed. 10 years ago, we weren't willing to spend money to train people. Now we are. BMW, Chrysler, Fiat, a lot of these places, they're all doing their own training for their own tech. So this is something that, yes, it's sad to see the program go, but it is what it is. I mean, you just can't spend money you don't have. We're not there. I, I, I have to, you have to have faith in your administrator. So I, to me, this is a, it is what it is. I don't know if anybody else has any strong feelings, but anyway, that's, that's my little two cents on the whole matter.
Thank you.
Mary.
Thank you.
Mary Kate, Mary Kate, it's Vicky. I guess I'd prefer to leave some of the statements and personal positions out of the discussion and really try to focus on the programs and their value to the students, the community, their history, how we determined those versus others. And I just don't think, I guess two things I would say that the semester started. So is this conversation about a decision that might impact the second semester? Or are we talking about next year? Or are we talking about now?
Well, yeah.
And I don't understand enough about it, but it seems to me like for this semester, it is too late. Right? So I assume this is a conversation around, do we bring this back in January if that were to be a decision or next year? So is that a fair statement?
It is. And, and so I would, I would agree, we will have discussions about the programs in general. The semester has started. These programs are not currently being offered. We, as a board, have it within our purview to make a decision to fund these programs, and it would be for the spring or in further, in next fall, and that would be under the purview of the board to make those determinations. And they're, so we're not, to your point, Vicky, we're not talking about right now. So it is either in the future, the spring semester, or even the fall of next year. And I would agree with you. Well, let's keep the conversations to the, the program discontinuations and whether the board should take this on as a, to, to reverse and to fund these programs.
If I may, this is Bill Johnson. I, I agree 100%, and that's the point I was making, that Dr. Gorman came in with no facts, no figures of saying why these programs needed to be saved. She only made innuendos and hate speech, and I don't like that.
I understand, I understand, Doc. I, I understand trustee Johnson. I understand. Thank you, thank you, trustee. I understand. I think it's important for us as trustees. We all heard Dr. Gorman, and she did share her comments with us. I'd like to kind of go into more of the program discussion in general, maybe even specifically for the three that were brought up to us as trustees.
Mary, Mary Kate, just a, Mary Kate.
Yes, Steve.
So, you know, Vicky had mentioned something that I think is important. A couple of things there. One is, I mean, we certainly, whether we like what we hear from someone or not, we, we don't want to squash any voices. But secondly, you know, I'd be interested to know if we're still going to scrutinize the cuts. I don't know that we need to, because as I mentioned in the last minute, you know, I, I'm willing to trust the process. I'm not sure there's much more we can do. But I'd be, if we're going to still scrutinize them, I'd be interested to see the track record on some of these, you know, over, say, the past 10 years. I, I don't know that. And I tried to go through some of my, some of my notes from early on when I became a trustee. I don't know that there had not been discussion in the past about cutting some of these programs or doing something with them because of their lagging attendance prior to Dr. Cook coming on board. And then, you know, we're faced with this pandemic where you're, where there's so much uncertainty about the amount of funding coming from the state in the, in the shortfall in the funding from the state, that, you know, you end up having to make some pretty quick decisions and some, you know, drastic decisions. But I don't know that there wasn't discussion on some of these programs in the past about potentially eliminating the program or restructuring or combining because in themselves, there wasn't the attendance that was necessary. But anyway, that, that's my two cents.
So Mary Kate, Vicky, I, I think it's important that we, we do have to take into account what the community of the college, whether it's students, alumni, staff, or other community members have to say about the programs. And there was substantial, as we all received commentary from many, many constituencies about these programs and their need, importance, value. So I, I think that it's, I, I think as a board, it would be important to, to review information that I don't think has necessarily been presented or available about the programs. And it goes to, I think, a lot of what Steve's talking about. How long has the program been in existence? How many students does it serve? What's the percentage of attendance? I mean, if we look at the chart, every program we offer loses money, right? So you could say we should just not do anything. You know, how are these programs attended? If, you know, you can't say that there's only 15 students. If our capacity is 18, that doesn't mean the program is, there isn't interest in the program, right? It means there's potentially a lot of interest. What's the competition? Can students get these services somewhere else? I, I don't know. I just think if we're going to embark on this endeavor to review the decision and potentially respond to the community and the constituents' request for review, I think there's a lot of information that needs to be gathered and presented before we could make the decision to continue to fund the programs out of some other resources. And so I, I think there's a lot of work to be done in that area.
Yeah.
Do I have the floor? No?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to comment on, well, there's two main things that I struggle with with this. And the first part is the process, which it was done. And so the board, whether it was individual, like, we didn't know until the decision was already made. And so we weren't given our due diligence as our position as a board to assist in making the decision. And so now here we are. I think it would have made a lot more sense to be presented with all of the information that we were presented with after the fact beforehand, and, you know, be given the opportunity under our fiduciary responsibility to take a transparent vote for the removal of the program. So that's one of the issues that I have is the process in which this all took place. And then the other part is looking at the program margins. All of the programs are losing money. And the seven programs that, you know, were removed tend to be on the more minimal end of the losing money, right? So we have some programs that are losing close to $2 million. And then, you know, we have other programs that were only losing $80,000, and those are the ones that are being cut. So those are just, you know, for now, my comment, and I just want to say that for consideration of other trustees that, you know, for lack of a better phrase, we're almost robbed of our ability to make a decision which is within our purview for the college.
And this is trustee Stark. I, I'll even expand on that, right? So here, here we are in September, and I think it's great that we're talking about the programs and whether we actually approve as a board that the decisions, just not being informed with the, the right level of data.
the, the right level of data that, that went into the decision, no, is frustrating, right? So again, I, I asked for the, the, the analysis that was done using all the factors, right? One of the, one of the feeders into the decision certainly should have been, how much money are we, are we making or losing on programs? But that's not in and of itself, that should not be the, the decision maker for all the reasons that were mentioned already on the call. So, so I, I asked at a Ways and Means Committee meeting, right, right? As we were told that the programs were, were discontinued for the analysis to be shared with the entire Ways and, Ways and Means Committee and then the full board. And we still don't have that analysis. So this conversation is great to talk about the, the, the programs and, and what we're, what we're experiencing here is just everybody kind of, kind of expressing their frustrations with, with either the fact that these decisions were made or some reactions I forgot from the AUC, which is all fair. And we're doing this because we don't have, we still don't have the analysis that went into why the decisions were made. So we can't really give other than just, because my perspective being, being head of the, being the, the chair of the Ways and Means Committee is, we do have money. So we've got, if we don't, if we've got $14 million sitting around, then you mean to tell me we can't leverage some of that for, for at least one semester? We got to make a decision like, 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 we're, we're not at the point of, of, of needing to close our doors. So again, all that to say, we don't, we still sit here without the full analysis that went into making these decisions. And what, what it looks like is exactly what Bill said, which is frustrating, which is if someone's making claims that are unsubstantiated, that's not, that's not appropriate. But if we made decisions to cut programs without analysis, that's unsubstantiated. And consistently, it's not, it's not appropriate.
Great, thank you, trustee Starks.
Mary Kate, um, this is Betty.
Yes.
And um, I'm, you know, listening to obviously the comments being made. And my feeling from the get-go has been, um, like Janay said, what was the process? And that, I think, is what's bothered me. I haven't seen it in black and white, on a spreadsheet, on whatever. How was it done to make this conclusion? And I've listened in on all the Ways and Means um committee meetings. I'm not on the committee, but I took the time to listen to what was going on to learn more about the finances, because I know so much is being impacted because of the COVID. But to cut something, you got to have a process that was done to make the decision. And we don't know what it was. That's me, that's mine.
Can I join in?
Thank you. Yes, please.
Um, so even though I wasn't here for last year and I kind of knew to this, um, from the last meeting, I do understand a lot of the frustration and how everything came out from the trustee position and the student side, because now I'm the person who also gets tied in with you guys, and it's a great honor. And, but it's also just really frustrating. I can understand from just all the confusion. I understand that cuts have to be made. When I came into this position, I understood that during these times, everything is not going to be as great as we want it to be. There's a certain capacity that we can run the college. But from also my understanding, the information that we're all running behind is not where it should be. And even though I did feel like uh the last trustee meeting was very uh came in very somewhat like with an undertone of hostility and just a lot of frustration. That is what the students and the community are feeling. And even though I too did feel hurt by it, we do have to understand that she was more so of an outlet of how the community is feeling. And even with the unsubstantial evidence that we weren't presented, that is also just how we're feeling. We do have to take into consideration the community's feelings. I'm very, I'm very much someone who considers the financial, but with a college and the times that we're running, we do have to consider how the students are feeling, how the staff is, how we look to the community, because at the end of the day, we are a community college. But I also would really like to see the financial summary and how this decision was made, because so far from my understanding, I don't know how this decision got made. Coming into this position, I was just knowing that these were things that happened. I didn't know under what circumstances. I didn't know if they needed to be. I also, from my understanding, I can't get that explanation from anyone. And I think that's a problem if I'm not even able to explain it to another trustee or just jump in and be like, I understand what happened. I have no understanding of how these cuts made. I'm not necessarily against the cuts, but I want to understand why they're made and if they needed to be made. And I feel like that is a very big problem to be left in the dark, not just for us, but for our community, because I do think there is probably an area or capacity that we can run some of these or keep some of these programs.
Great, thank you, trustee Anderson. Appreciate it.
This is Jeff Sattler. I have a comment to that. I respect exactly what everybody's feeling, but understand this is a situation that we made, I made a decision based on facts that was presented by the administration on cost of improvement and enrollment. And the fact that we are in a crisis situation. You make a decision and you stand by it. We have lost seven programs. It doesn't mean we cannot get them back. We have to balance a budget and we have to maintain this college in the long run. And we're still not out of this COVID crisis. And I'm not going backwards in June from a decision I made and look at all seven programs and rehash the whole thing. We decided, and I stand by my decision. I just stand by the administration and their due diligence on what was presented. I am not going to analyze every piece of paper, every student enrollment for the last 10 years. That's not my role as a trustee.
Trustee Sadler, this is trustee Stark. What, what decision did you, did you, did you make? I'm, I'm just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
I, I, I agreed with the recommendation to uh cancel seven of the, of the courses because of cost and enrollment uh to balance the budget. That's what I agreed to.
That's it, Vicky. There, there was no recommendation. We were informed after the decision was made. We didn't get a recommendation. We were told it was done. And uh I get that, you know, we as a board allocate some level of authority, but I, I would, I think I said this on another meeting. I think that we maybe need to look at that and say, what level of decisions, if they're this substantial and impactful, should there be a discussion and a recommendation and an affirmative decision? Because we didn't get a recommendation. We got told what happened. And I, I don't, I, I agree with you. I mean, it's not our job to review every piece of paper, but we haven't been presented with one that gives us any information on how those seven programs were chosen and enough detail to support. You know, maybe there should have been 10 program cuts. I don't, I don't know. We don't know, and that's the problem. But we did not receive a recommendation. We were told.
You're, you're correcting me. You are right with that. But I, I do remember, you know, un- understanding the severity at the time of what we had to do and went with what was presented. Maybe we should have more information. You know, it's a good point, Vicky. It's a good, you bring up a good point.
Well, trustee Sadler, you, you, you're right in that we were having discussions around us um feeling the heat around our financials, not knowing what's coming from the state. You know, we were having, we were talking about needing additional meetings to talk about it. You're absolutely right. But what, and the, the, the really frustrating thing about this is these cuts were made without having a conversation about the, these, the, these cuts, even though we were all talking about needing to make sure we were close to the financials. So it's like, so, so yes, you're right. We shouldn't be, we don't run the college, it's not our role. But if we're having conversations about the financials and, which is, which is, which is cer- certainly fair and appropriate, then how do you make big decisions like, well, how do you make decisions like this without informing us before you make the decision? That's, that's the struggle.
So Mary Kate, I don't know if there's a lot. I mean, we could certainly talk about this for a long time, but I wonder like, where are we trying to go with this conversation? And um at some point, maybe after the discussion is over, you know, I, I guess I would recommend that perhaps what we need to do is if this is possible, take a vote as to whether or not the board wants to reconsider at the request of the constituents and the community, uh, the program decisions. And then if we agree to, to reconsider, um, that doesn't mean we're going to change or do anything necessarily. But I think if we decide to do that, we should then come up with a process and information that would be required to be shared for reconsideration so that when we do finally get to assuming we're going to relook at them, that decision, everyone can feel that there was um transparent and adequate review um to support the decision, and then we can kind of move forward.
I, I hear that a little bit in a motion, Vicky. Um, would you, would, could you succinctly um put that motion forward?
Yeah, the discussion may not be over, and I guess I can make the motion and people can continue to discuss it. But I would make a motion that the board vote whether or not it wants to reconsider the community and the constituents' um request to review the closure of the, I, I, we should probably just look at them all. But if somebody wants to adjust my motion, the, the, the three or seven programs um for reconsideration um for, for the future. And I guess I don't, don't know that it would be fair to say whether it could be spring or next year at this point. But I would make a motion that the board, you know, enter into a process of reconsideration on the seven program closures.
Hearing that motion, is there a second?
Uh, before we uh proceed to, on the motion, can I add some, a couple of things?
Yeah, so uh trustee Lindsay, let me get if a second, and then we'll open for a discussion, because there's a motion on the floor first. So do I hear a second for the motion given by trustee Kraus? That the board would reconsider, reconsider uh the program dis- uh discontinuation. Um, trustee Kraus said three or seven programs uh for future consideration.
I second the motion. This is Jeff Sattler.
Jeff has a second. And now um discussion, trustee Lindsay.
Um, just two things that I um, uh, from listening to the conversation and all, all that I do know. Um, one is the, I, I think we all can agree that we don't really want to micromanage. But it seems to me from listening to the conversation and everything that we've read that this was definitely one of those major decisions that it seems that a proposal to the board regarding the pros and, and con of uh these program cuts that was um such a, as such a major impact is something that the board should have an ability to weigh in on. Um, and it seems that that didn't happen. Second part is, I'm also curious as to, under what circumstance and uh condition would we be able to uh in the future reconsider reinstituting these programs? What would it take? What, what, what? You know, a- and this would go back to what Mr. Stark was talking about. Without the, the, um, the data and that kind of information, uh, which would be crucial to, for reconsideration. Those are, those are just two of the things that I wanted to um just intro- introduce in terms of um for reconsideration.
Thank you, trustee Lindsay. Um, I, I, I do believe um with the motion on the table, we could also set a process um to ensure that we are getting the necessary information as trustee Kraus eloquently mentioned earlier um in her motion. Um, but at, at this time, I, you know, I, I might need a little help here, Nanette. I'd like to amend the emo- the current motion on the table that we reconsider all programs, seven programs, and ask for a um complete financial analysis of all seven programs and not just the three as recommended by Dr. Gorman. Nanette, I can do, is that um procedurally okay?
Um, yes. Do we need um another?
Yes, I, I, I just want to make sure. Is there a second to my amendment to?
Second.
So, so before we do that, this is just trustee Starks. You know, can I just amend that a little? So it's, it's not, it's not just a financial analysis that, that's not going to, that, that's a feeder into it. It's, it's, it's the, what's, what is the decision? What are all the factors that went into the decision about each one of the programs? Right? So we can have a full, because we don't, we don't run the college. We don't micromanage the college, it's not our role. But we need, we need some more flavor around what's happening with the decision. It can't just be financial, because they all lose money. So it's got to be just more than that.
Absolutely. So I, I, I definitely misspoke, trustee Starks. I, I think we um decide that and make a decision to reconsider the program discontinuations. And then the process can be outside the motion and to ensure that the trustees receive um what they need um it to review and make a informed process, uh, decision process. If you're comfortable with that, trustee Starks.
Yes, I'm comfortable with that, yes.
Yeah, it sounds like really it's, it's, it's adding to that the procedure, you know, for, for going forward essentially.
Absolutely, trustee Hagobian. Um, did I hear a second for my amendment to trustee Kraus' original uh motion? I think that was you, trustee Anderson. I got you. Thank you so much. Discussion on the amendment to trustee Kra- uh Kraus' uh motion.
I do think it's important that we look at, and I forgot to bring this up earlier, that's my fault, that we look at understanding that despite what's going to be cut because of COVID and for the near future, and what do we want to cut in the long run? Because I think that is a very big part that we're overseeing is what's a for now decision and what the, once we're better off, we can reopen this program. I feel like that's a very big thing that we might be looking over right now, just in maybe the terms of just hearing program cuts, because from what I do understand is that they aren't, most of these programs aren't cut indefinitely. And I feel like that's also something we should consider, because if they're not going to be cut indefinitely, and maybe they're cuts we need to take right now, then maybe we should take the cuts right now and just leave it.
Trustee Anderson, that, that's very well said. And essentially what you're asking for is show me a strategy that, that lays out what we would do in event, totally with you. And that, that's literally what we're asking for and what we've been asking for. So I'm right there.
Great, I have a, a motion on the floor with an uh addendum that is with a second additional discussion.
Uh, this is, this is Betty. I, I, one of the things that I keep coming up with in my mind is criteria. What was, is there a list? Was there a, uh, did, did they, did you, were the decisions made by criteria? Was there um yes, no, that they met this? Or what was the very beginning? How did it start so that we know the process? And what we're seeing?
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, trustee Hagobian, I think you wanted to try to get in?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
This is Bill, Bill Johnson, one of the
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. I'm sorry.
I question whether we have the statutory authority to uh I mean, to me, this is getting into the administration and management of the college a lot deeper than what a board usually does. Do we even have the statutory authority to reverse a decision as it relates to the cutting of programs by the administrator, administration?
It is, in my understanding, that the board is capable of um reallocating funds as trustee Starks um to bring back programs. Um, so we do have that within our purview. Uh, but you make up a good point, is that we don't want to get in the weeds of the administration. Um, and I think Jeff, you made, uh, Sattler, trustee Sattler made that comment earlier. Uh, but we would like to, um, we, we have that ability moving forward um to make those decisions. Trustee Johnson. Johnson. So I call, Nanette, I call for the vote of trustee Kraus's motion with trustee, Chair Murin addendum, that we will reconsider the discontinuation of the seven programs in the future and reconsider those decisions.
Okay, so Mary-Kate Murin?
Yes.
Alessandra Anderson?
Yes.
Vicky Kraus?
Yes.
Eve Grande?
Yes.
Eric Hagopian?
Yes.
Phil Johnson?
No.
Maurice Lindsay?
Yes.
Janay McDonald?
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito?
Yes.
Jeff Sattler?
Jeff, you might be on mute.
I think he had to leave for a doctor's appointment. Remember, he mentioned that?
Oh, that's right, Bill.
Okay. I thought his number was still there. Thank you. Mac Stark's?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. So what I would like to do is probably put a little ad hoc committee together and to discuss to ensure that we are requesting what we need from the administration. And so I will have those conversations and see who would like to participate in an ad hoc smaller committee to ensure that we bring up some of the conditions trustee Kraus and others brought up of what we need for that reconsideration of the program discontinuations. Just want to make sure that makes sense from a process perspective from a board. Trustee Stark's, trustee Kraus, any others?
Yes, I think that's good.
I agree.
That makes sense.
I think it makes sense, and then that committee can, you know, report, I guess, technically the ways and means, who could then report out to the whole board.
Absolutely.
And we can create a timeframe and, you know, let everybody know what's going on and when that will all come together.
Understood.
And I would say that it should be a sooner rather than later process, just so that we can bring this to some conclusion.
Absolutely. Trustee Kraus, we'll make sure we expedite the formation and the ask of what we need.
So Mary-Kate, are we gonna do a call for that, to approve the ad hoc?
Oh, yes. So I better do that. So the motion's on the floor that Chair Murin will form an ad hoc committee who will be the quote unquote liaison between the administration and the Board of Trustees for the program, that's a tough word, discontinuation, program reassessment and review. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Nanette, please call the, call for that ad hoc motion.
Mary-Kate Murin?
Yes.
Alessandra Anderson?
Yes.
Vicky Kraus?
Yes.
Eve Grande?
Yes.
Eric Hagopian?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay?
Yes.
Janay McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito?
Yes.
Jeff Sattler? Mac Stark's?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. So moving, moving on, I do want to now have the discussion of the All-Unit Congress resolution. I do want to acknowledge receipt of said resolution on September 1st from Eric Warren. As you know, the AUC is a shared governance body, Springfield Technical Community College. It is my understanding that all trustees were given the resolution, and that you do have that. Is that, is that correct?
Trustee Kraus, yes, I received it.
Yes.
Great. And so I do want to have that res, if you could bring that resolution. John, are you able to bring that up?
Um, John, I have it, I have board pack up. So, John, if I can share my screen, maybe I can, I can bring it up. Thank you. So just give me a few minutes and I'll bring it up.
Mary-Kate, while she's bringing that up, what, so what are we being, what are we doing right now? Are we responding?
Yeah, I want to, I want to make some comments first, trustee Kraus, about this resolution, and what remains within the purview of the board and what is not in the purview of the board. First, I just want to make sure everyone, we have it up, so others, because we are streaming that, people can see it.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, it's taking a little bit longer, but I had it.
That's okay. It's, it's all about technology in the 2020, right?
Yes. I had it up and the password expired, so let me bring it up again.
So let me, let me just jump in as Nanette starts to bring that forward. This was a resolution that was brought to the members of the All-Unit Congress. It does state a couple of resolutions, formal resolutions within this. To be clear first, from a board perspective, the board does not make personnel decisions. We have purview and oversight of the selection and review process of the president of the community college and not staff. So right off the bat, we, as a board, do not have jurisdiction over staff members, anyone who is mentioned within this resolution. Also, it is the board's responsibility and remain, and will continue to remain, the responsibility to review the president and make any recommendations moving forward, and that would include any type of intern leadership, and the adult, and the All-Unit Congress will not have majority consent. That remains the sole, and one of the sole purposes of the Board of Trustees moving forward, but of course, people are involved in processes. And it is my understanding that process did occur prior to me sitting on the board with the selection and the appointment of the current president. So I just wanted to really just kind of open this up, acknowledge the receipt of said resolution, and wanted to give the opportunity of the Board of Trustees to ask questions and to have any type of discussion around this, trustee Kraus, because it was given to me as the chair of the board.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I just wasn't sure what we were, the purpose, and I think you, the two statements you made earlier in terms of what our responsibility is and isn't is very important, and I would suggest that that's what it should continue to be. And, you know, the board is the one who is tasked with the delegation or management or selection of the president and not the All-Unit Congress, and I'm, you know, that group certainly is not, that's not part of their authority, although, you know, I do know that certain members of the staff and faculty have sat in on search committee processes.
Absolutely, and they will continue, because this needs to be a cross collaborative with our, even with our students, our students, faculty and staff, as we continue to select those who are needed to, as administration, to the community college. Any, any, any further discussion?
I just have a question, and that is, with respect to this formal resolution, you know, what, what is it? I mean, what does it mean? Is it, do we have to take action on it? You know, what is our responsibility with respect to this AUC resolution?
We do not need to take action on it, because the board is not held to any formal resolutions. It was merely, so trustee, it was merely my opportunity to discuss this in an open meeting, that it was presented to us September 1st, and specifically presented to me as a formal resolution that coming out of the All-Unit Congress. It was an opportunity for me to be candid and transparent with the information I'm receiving from faculty and staff on the community college.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, well, since personnel decisions outside of the naming and renaming of the president of the college, and we just had a resolution around the seven programs, and considering that in another meeting, it was also brought to our attention through my questioning that there were no formal complaints filed, so I'm just wondering at what point, I don't want to say what the relevancy of this is now, but what else surrounding this are we discussing, considering what we, you know, the actions that we just took, and what's within our purview?
I think trustee McDonald, well said, and that's, that's exactly, I don't know if there is no further discussion and understanding what is in the purview of the Board of Trustees and the actions we recently took. There, there seems to be, from your comment and maybe some others, no formal action moving forward on this resolution, but merely acknowledgement of receipt of said resolution.
If I made this to Bill Johnson, I think I'd make a motion, a motion that we have received the correspondence and have noted it, and that's, and just so it's in public record, that's all.
Is there a second for trustee Johnson's motion of acknowledgement and public record of the AUC formal resolution to the Board of Trustees?
Before we move forward, this is trustee Stark's. I just, just want to, I'm curious, you know, we as trustees, I get the fact that we've got this information in our hands now. I know that is not our, is it coming upon us to determine how we want to act and move forward with it? I think that's totally fair, you know, but I don't, I'm wondering whether or not we do need to further probe, you know, because to, to, to trustee Johnson's point, you know, some, you know, there were comments made that were certainly unsubstantiated, but could they be, could they be substantiated? And if they could, you know, you know, would that help inform the Board of Trustees around potentially doing something, doing something not necessarily about what the correspondent says here, but just something more, more broad, right? So that, that's the question I have in my mind. So my, my comments aren't necessarily about what we received here, but more just, you know, how do we, as a Board of Trustees, who aren't there every day, who don't, who only have limited interactions with the, the Dr. Cook and the faculty, and even more limited, the administration, how do we get our arms, get a better arms around really what is going on and how we can then react? So it's more of a question.
Yeah, I'd have to state, trustee Stark's, it's not the Board of Trustees' purview to quote unquote probe into personnel matters. We have, there is an interim Assistant Vice President of Human Resources that specifically to trustee McDonald's statement of August at our last board meeting, I believe it was 24th, there have been no formal allegations. And as you know, those would be investigated internally, and I have to say, it is not within the board's purview to dig into personnel matters. If you are talking about things specific to the president, that becomes our purview, but we do not want to be an investigation arm of the college. And that would be my comment as my real job as a HR professional.
Yeah, that makes sense. I wasn't, I was more thinking about the comments within that, that were specific to Dr. Cook.
Yeah, and I think to trustee McDonald's, again, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, trustee, but you did mention that there were no formal allegations or complaints. And I am always hesitant to make any type of comments or directional type of processes when there are strictly allegation and third-party conversations. I believe that there is a process established within the college and across all of the education arms that can be utilized by faculty and staff, and if that is not being done, then that is more on those who are potentially having third-party conversations that cannot be substantiated.
Yeah, I think that that's helpful. That, that makes sense. And, you know, again, I, my, my concern is that, I'm not concerned that we aren't doing what we need to do. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're eyes wide open when we do hear things, and, and certainly we all read, I'm sure we all read, you know, what the AUC put forth. You know, I think that certainly to your point about there's nothing formal, I'm not trying to say that something did happen. My, 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 my comments are really more around, how do we get comfortable with that nothing is happening that's, that's egregious? And what is, what does that process look like? So when you, when you say that there's HR at the college that would be handling things that would, would bubble up, I think that's great. I just don't know what that looks like, and if that would even, how we would even receive, we know about anything that was happening at the college that we, we, we should be aware of and likely would take action on. I just don't know how that's come together.
Let me ask a quick question. I just want some clarity on the, what is our, in terms of the board and this matter that's been, come before us, in terms of jurisdiction? Because if we, if this is outside of our jurisdiction in whatever form, then we can acknowledge receipt of it and, and state as such that it's not within our jurisdiction and move forward. But if it is something that in any form is, I, I'm just not clear on the board's having jurisdiction regarding this matter. Can you clarify?
Absolutely, trustee Lindsay. The only thing within the purview of the board is the selection of the president and/or the removal of the president within this resolution. Everything else, any type of comments, the removal of faculty and staff is not within the purview of the Board of Trustees, and we have no jurisdiction on that.
Considering, Madam Chair, considering what trustee Stark's also mentioned, is it safe to say that had there been some form of formal complaints, that this would be a different conversation, but because there's nothing to be founded on, you know, because I just want to make sure I understand appropriately, as far as you highlighted about HR and that they have that process, but the VP of HR is still under the president of the college. And so. And so kind of like trustee Stark said, at what point would that information get to us?
Yeah, I, trustee McDonald, I can't comment on potentially hypothetical, right? Because I don't, I don't know if there's, I have no knowledge of anything coming in. But from, from, what I can speak to specifically is my own professional silo and not necessarily to the, to the colleges. We have a process internally and also anonymously that people can submit alleged allegations within my business, my business silo, so I'm not speaking about the college. I make the, the guess that that also exists and would be then escalated up to entities outside the college. But I do not wanna make a comment specifically towards the college, because I am not aware and have a good understanding of that process.
Mary, Mary Kate, it's Vicky, would it make sense if this is a question that's coming forth from obviously now multiple trustees to ask that, and I'm not sure that this, this is the right thing either, but perhaps that Ken Tachi, who represents and is aware of the formality around these types of processes, that he would speak to this issue at a future board meeting?
So just so I'm clear, Vicky, speak to how we handle formal resolutions that come in, is that what, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm clear.
So I guess there's been lots of commentary about how would, I guess that's part of the question, but then how would the board? If this isn't, let's say this is not the process, right? We're all saying that we don't believe we need to take action or respond to the particular resolution, because we're not, it's not the process, it's not our obligation to respond to the resolution. So if that is accurate, then I think folks are asking, what would the process be? How would we know if there were concerns or issues that were raised if this is not the forum, right? How would we know? I think that's what people are asking, I'm not really sure, but that's what I'm interpreting, that if this isn't the forum, this resolution, which we think we don't, aren't required to respond to, then what would be the mechanism for the board to be made aware of concerns? And what would that process be? And I think that's what none of us can answer, and perhaps that's something that Ken could answer for us, so that we would know that there is a process in place. I, I think that's what people are asking, but I, I don't wanna, that's what I, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, if I may, may, maybe I, I don't know. I, I feel we're chasing ghosts. If there was something substantial, it would bubble to the surface. We're, we're dealing with this across the country, but with everything, it's just, people create innuendos and rumors, and everybody wants to try to solve, solve what's going on. I believe there is something substantial going on, it would bubble to the surface, and we would see some, some hard facts, not just innuendos. All my motion was that we, we received it, we discussed it, and that was it. It was just for public record that we weren't trying to bury it, that we received it, we discussed it. That's all my motion is, that's all, that's all I'm looking for. I feel we're just like a dog chasing its tail. If something is going on, it will surface. We don't need to ask how it will surface, but trust me, it will surface.
So I just wanna be, hold on, I wanna be, wanna be clear, is that we do have a motion, is there a second? Is that trustee Johnson's motion was to acknowledge receipt of the All-Unit Congress resolution and the discussion that within, is there a second?
Yeah.
I mean, I need a, I need a second first, and then I will have discussion.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second that.
And then, and then discussion, please.
Yeah, so, so I, so, so my, my, my question or my, my concern, it's consistent with Vicky described, but if you look at it from my purview, you know, so we had, we had comments made, unsubstantiated, no detail, there, there's nothing on record that we're aware of, you know, of, of anything going on there. But we do, I, I, I do see cabinet members leaving, there, I, I, I don't, I, I find it concerning that, that, that again, we're cabinets leaving, and I hear comments in the, in the, or seek, read comments in the detail that describes kinda retaliation, it makes me question, hmm, are those types of things happening with the staff? Now, I'm not there every day, but those are things that, that we as trustees aren't privy to, and if we, if we were privy to that, would we be having a different conversation? So, so that, that, that's my concern, it, it isn't that, you know, we're chasing ghosts, to, to your point, trustee Johnson, it's more, well, we, we, there are things that are happening around us, and while we aren't there, we don't know the reasons for it, 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 it's real, when you look at, you know, just, just a couple of years back, I'm talking two years back, the entire cabinet is almost completely shaken up. And the, so the question is, hmm, what, is there, is, is there something behind that? Or is it just people just left for, for other opportunities?
And I think that's the comment of, one, one second, trustee Johnson, I'll let you jump in, and and, and, and I wanna be clear too, is that yes, there are people leaving. We hear second and third-party conversations, and I've been involved in higher education, and as administrators come in, people leave. And I just wanna be really, really clear, is that it is, there is no knowledge to me, and I think for everyone else, and even Dr. Gorman, who was specifically asked by trustee McDonald if there were any formal complaints about the president. So I know, I know, I hear what you're saying, Mac, but I wanna be, you know, really respectful, right, of staff members, whether they're our presidents, faculty or staff, there are, there are alleged accusations with no backup, and there are no formal complaints against the president. To trustees Kraus, a question about how would we know? I think it's, it's an important question, and that would be something that would probably need to be escalated up to others to find out what that process is. And, and what I'm hearing most in general is that we as the Board of Trustees really wanna understand process more, be involved and communicated to more, and make sure our processes, as decisions are made, are a little bit tighter. And that's what I think I'm hearing. And so I just needed to, to make those comments, and I know, I think it was trustee Johnson, you wanted to have a comment.
Well, well, Madam Chairman, you, you said kinda what I was gonna say more eloquently than I ever could, but basically, I was gonna say is, people leave for various reasons. I, I don't run a big place, I got 70 employees, and I've changed management in, in a certain division, because it wasn't producing, and I've had people leave under that manager. So people leave for different reasons, and, and, and just because there are people leaving doesn't mean there's anything nefarious going on, that's all I was gonna say, so that, that's I think we beat the death.
Yeah, trustee Johnson, trustee Murn, I, I totally agree with you, I, my, my point wasn't that just because people are leaving, that means something's going on, my, my, my point was just that when we do hear, we have written documentation that talks about, you know, essentially retribution. And, you know, so I, 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 as the trustee, say, okay, well, even though you may not have been able to substantiate that, could that be a feeder into why folks have left? And, and again, it's the question, and, and if, if that is happening, how would we as trustees even know that? Because I'm sure all, all of us have, have, have either own businesses or work for businesses, and fear retribution is absolutely something that is just not, is not, is not ethical, is not something that, that I wanna foster across this, this community, this college as a trustee. So again, I just wanna, I'm just trying to understand, how do we even know? So I'm not even, I'm not, I'm not saying that anybody's doing anything. I'm just, I'm just trying to say, are we missing the opportunity to connect dots? And without kind of boiling the ocean to get there, so that, that's my question.
Trustee Kraus?
Yeah, I just want, so I, I guess I'm just gonna go back to who can, who can clarify, maybe provide additional information to the board about how the process would work or should work, so that everybody's feeling like there's transparency in whatever information may or may not, you know, be available. If there's no information available, then there's obviously not, not a ton of conversation that can or should be had, but you, you know, what is that process? And I think that's what none of us can answer, and I, somebody can. And so if it's not Ken, perhaps it's someone other, some other person. But I think it would just be good to know, this, this would be the process if a complaint or an allegation was brought forward, this is how it would work, and this is how you would know, and this would be your responsibility to take action or not take action, or whatever. I, we can't answer the question for ourselves, so I'm just asking who can? And should that person be invited to a, a future meeting to discuss this topic?
And I, I think, you know, I will take this on in ownership to find out, I don't have the answer, trustee Kraus, and I think no one has the answer from a board perspective, but I will take that on as a responsibility to find out and report back to, to the board on that.
Awesome, thank you.
And everyone, we still, we have a now call, a motion and a second of acknowledgement of the AUC resolution and the discussion within. We had discussion, Nanette, call the vote, please.
Mary Kate Miren?
Yes.
Alessandra Anderson?
Yes.
Vicky Kraus?
Yeah.
Steve Grande?
Yes.
Eric Hagopian?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay? Maurice Lindsay?
Yes.
Janay McDonald? You're muted, Janay.
Yes.
Thank you. Elizabeth Posito?
Yes.
Jeff Sattler? And Max Starks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there old business? The only new business I have is that we will, the next board meeting, finalize a vice chair for the executive committee for the Board of Trustees. So one of you will get that call from me. So hopefully you do answer the phone when I do call, or I'll send you an email. The date of our next meeting is Monday, October 26, 2020. And do I hear a motion to adjourn the Springfield Technical Community College Board of Trustees meeting of Friday, September 25, 2020?
I make a motion.
Eddie, do I hear a second?
Eric Hagopian.
Eric, on a second. Nanette, would you please call the roll for the motion to end the Board of Trustees' meeting? Yes.
Alessandra Anderson?
Yes.
Vicky Kraus?
Yeah.
Steve Grande?
Yes.
Eric Hagopian?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay? Janay McDonald?
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito?
Yes.
Jeff Sattler? And Max Starks?
Yes.
Great, thank you, everyone, I appreciate your time on a Friday, have a wonderful, wonderful weekend, the weather's gonna be spectacular.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thanks, folks, take care.
Thank you.